This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
As Chair of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals, I call this meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public hearing of the Town of Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking on a link in the town's webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48 and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We'll begin with a roll call of the regular members of the ZBA who have been impaneled for the consideration of items on tonight's agenda. I'm Steve Judge. I'm in attendance. Mr. Langsdale?
Here.
Ms. O'Meara?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
And associate members, Ms. Walman?
Here.
Mr. Barrick? Mr. Greeney? Mr. Meadows? Also in attendance is Maureen Pollack, Planner, Christine Brestup, Planning Director, Nate Malloy, Senior Planner, Dave Waszewicz, from the Building Commissioner's Office, Barbara Huggins Carboni of the KP Law Firm, who is serving as our outside counsel to the board on this matter. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaws is Section 10.38. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. Each petition is heard by the board is distinct and is evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, please present your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. I want to remind the applicant, my fellow board members, and the public to seek recognition from the chair before speaking. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by a public meeting for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. Within 40 days from closing of the public hearing, the ZBA in a comprehensive permit, the ZBA must render a decision, denial, approval, or approval with condition based on majority vote. Within 14 days of this decision, the ZBA must file a copy with the town clerk, and within 20 days from the date the ZBA decision is filed with the town clerk, the applicant or public can appeal the ZBA decision. I want to review the ways in which the public can be informed and about and comment on this application in addition to these public hearings. One, residents can be notified of any additional information recorded by the town concerning this application through the notify me feature on the 132 North Hampton page on the town website. That's the dedicated page to this application on the town website. Two, copies of all submissions can be found on the town website. Three, public comment can be submitted on the town website or email to maureenpollackplanner@amherstma.gov. This meeting will also be broadcast by Amherst Media. And of course, tonight, there will be public comment and there will be public comment at future hearings. One note during due to a posting error regarding Thursday's August 20th, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the ZBA chair and the staff liaison to the ZBA appeared on Zoom on Thursday, August 20th, 2020 at 6:30 to continue the public hearing for the comprehensive permit application until tonight, Tuesday, August 25th, starting at 6:30. Tonight's agenda is as follows. A public hearing to consider, ZBA FY 2020-39. Valley Community Development Corporation, 132 North Hampton Road, requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a new two-and-one-half-story residential multifamily building containing 28 small studio apartments and related common areas on an approximate 8.88 acre property located at 132 North Hampton Road, MAP 14C Parcel 8, General Residence RG and Educational ED Zoning Districts. This meeting is continued, this public hearing is continued from August 6th, 2020. Items to be discussed tonight are as follows. First, finished discussion of the submitted supportive services plan. B, the applicant's response to and discussion of questions from the August 6th public hearing. Discussions regarding local and regional need for a proposed project. Discussions regarding local preference for proposed project. Public comment on this project. The board to compile a list of questions, requests, and possible conditions for consideration. Other items deemed appropriate. There's a general comment period for the public for items not the subject of tonight's hearing and other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours. We have a full agenda tonight and I intend to set aside ample time for public comment. If by 8:15 we have not finished discussion of the agenda items, I will suspend discussion and call for public comment. If time permits after public comment, we can resume discussion of the unfinished agenda items. Since the July 2nd public hearing, the board has received the following documents. The applicant submitted answers to the questions posed by the board on August 6th, and I think each of the board members has a copy of that PowerPoint. And we have also received three public comments. One from Mara Keen, a comment submitted via email, an anonymous comment submitted via the town website, and one from Amy Gilbert Loynez, submitted via memo. Those were submitted on August 14th, 17th, and 18th respectively. So who was representing the applicant tonight? Would they please provide their name and address?
This is Laura Baker, Real Estate Project Manager for Valley Community Development Corporation. Valley's address is 256 Pleasant Street, Suite A, North Hampton, Massachusetts.
Great.
Jane Leclerc, also representing Valley Community Development.
Great. Thank you. So at our last meeting, we began, you made your presentation on the supportive services plan, and you, I think we completed the presentation, we began the questions when we had to suspend the meeting for later. So in the middle, we're in the question asking session, section of this consideration. So I have a couple of questions that I would like, I have several questions I'd like to ask. I'm going to ask a few of them, then I'm going to turn it over to my fellow board members to ask some questions. And if depending upon the questions asked and answers, I may have some more questions after that time. The first question I have is, this is stated as a draft supportive services plan. When do you anticipate it being final, or is there a step that I may be unfamiliar with where this plan has to be submitted and approved to become final?
Correct. The plan needs to be submitted and approved by the state funding agency to become final. Up until that point, it is a draft plan.
So if after the ZBA, so you anticipate, you submit it and the state has to approve the plan. They could make changes, require changes, correct?
Correct.
So if after the ZBA vote on this matter?
Yes.
And the plan has been altered?
Yes.
Would you object, or would you have any concern to coming back and describing that change to the board in a public meeting? A significant change?
I would have no concern coming back to the board. My presumption is any significant change that occurs following, if the board decides to give a permit for this project would require a return to the board. The board would make the decision whether it's substantive or not.
Right. I think, and also in consultation with the town staff to advise you about whether it would be, but we would make the final decision on whether it's substantive or not. Correct?
Absolutely.
Second question I have is on page two of the draft plan. At the end of the first bullet, you talk about those individuals who are who are at risk for being homeless.
Yes.
You're talking, you mentioned, are somebody awaiting foster care placement? Describe a situation where somebody who's older than 18 is awaiting foster care placement as a person, not in the, not receiving services from DMH, but from, as a person at risk for being homeless.
So I did listen to the session. I know I was on vacation. I listened in and I know that you had that question. And I think Jane gave you the right answer, which is that we're providing a standard definition of homelessness and not every single item necessarily applies to this project. That that aspect of the definition does not apply to this project.
Okay. So that is not applicable to this project?
Correct.
All right, because you don't have, you're not taking anybody under 18?
Correct.
Okay. On page three of your draft plan, you have a box that talks, lists all tenants and then each individual breakdowns for tenants, formerly homeless people with individuals with mental health disabilities and low and moderate income tenants. For all tenants, I'm assuming the service needs are provided principally are accessed and or referred to principally by the RSC, correct? The Residential Service Counselor?
Yes.
For formerly homeless individuals, you talk about individual case management with an emphasis on primary primary and behavioral health needs. Who provides those services in that instance? Is it the local service providers? Is it DMH? Is it the Residential Service Counselor? Please talk about that.
Sure, sure. I'm happy to talk about that. So it is not the Residential Service Coordinator. It is typically the referring social service agency. So we do describe how when we have a homeless preference unit come available, we'll do outreach to a wide range of local agencies. They will refer people that are a good match for the property. They'll propose to deliver services during what's called the stabilization period, which is typically the first six to nine to 12 months of their tenancy. So they will provide those case management services during that time period. If a tenant is, comes to our awareness or comes to us directly who lacks an appropriate service provider, we'll try to do the matchmaking so that they have that service provider connected to them.
Okay, so you have identified two service providers in the plan. Are there other service providers who you might work with that are not identified? ACC and Elliott Homeless Services are the two that you've identified.
Sure, there have, there are others. So CDH is one. There have been times when Craig Stories Shelters has had the capacity to do this service. I don't know if they have it right now, but they may again in the future. So yeah, there could be ones beyond the two that we named who would provide services.
Okay, but they would be under the same constraints as the other, as you've listed. They should be providing services on an ongoing basis for the first nine to 12 months.
Yeah.
And, right, okay.
Yeah. And then after that stabilization period, the idea is they have set up permanent ongoing connections for that tenant to the extent that they need them with community-based services.
Okay. For individuals with mental health disabilities?
Yep.
Does the state directly provide these services or do they contract out?
They do not provide a service directly. They contract out and they annually or semi-annually bid for those services. Often ServiceNet has been the provider, but again, it's a bid situation, so it can change over time.
Okay. And for low and moderate income tenants, I suspect the role, tell me if I'm wrong, but as I read this, the role of the Residential Service Counselor or what's the exact title again? It's RSC, right?
Resident Services Coordinator.
Coordinator. The Residential Services Coordinator would be the person that would try to coordinate or provide access, help that person get access to those services. Is that correct?
Sure, that's correct. We have many tenants who don't need any services and that would be true of this property as well. So, but it is a nice safety net for anybody who lives there, has someone that they can turn to if they have any kind of challenge.
Right. So on page four, you talk about, I am not very familiar with DMH's procedure. So it says DMH assigns a case manager to develop a plan. So what I'm understanding from you is that the Department of Mental Health comes up with a plan, they provide that plan to the service provider, the service provider implements that plan. Is that right with the, and has regular consultations with DMH? Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
All right. And does the state pay the vendor or does that come out of your budget?
Yeah. No. So the state has, the state pays the vendor through regional network of DMH sites. So we have a site in North Hampton, which is the Western Mass DMH office. So they would be the conduit for payment to those service providers.
Right. We're going to be talking about referral of tenants later on, I think, in your answers to questions. So I'll defer my questions about tenant referral until we come up with your answers from last week's meeting.
Sure.
And lastly, I've come, in the last couple of weeks, I've come across something called C-Spec, which is the community support for people with experiencing chronic homelessness.
Correct.
You're, obviously you're familiar with it. Is this something that you use or can you, is this something that's incorporated into the services plan?
So C-Spec is a source that a service provider will use. So I believe that Elliott Services uses C-Spec, for example. As a, we're primarily a housing provider, so we are not competing directly for those type of specialized service dollars. But they impact our programs because the service providers use those dollars. And we've talked a couple of times about the fact that our, our project is not limited to chronically homeless persons. There's a very specific definition for that, whereas the C-Spec program is really targeting those individuals. So we may have some individuals who meet that criteria who live in our housing, but it wouldn't be everybody who has a homeless preference.
Right. So C-Spec is really the service provider's utility as opposed to something that you use as the developer, for lack of a better term, the developer?
We're not, we wouldn't be qualified to deliver C-Spec services directly.
Got it. And C-Spec is a state program?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I can find out.
That's not, actually, that's not important. I was just curious. And the last question for now, and then we can, I'll turn this over to other people.
Yeah.
Your 24-hour hotline. Who answers it and how does it, how is it run? I mean, one of the, one of the concerns that I have is I want to minimize police involvement and maximize more appropriate, I think we want to maximize more appropriate, less threatening responses. But when it's needed, the police should be called. So tell me how this is handled by a, by what really is the management company as opposed to one of the service organizations that are working with either the people at risk for homelessness or the state for the people with mental and mental health disabilities or regular, regular people who they may have other relationships with.
So I believe the slide that Jane covered had three different 24/7 call numbers. I think a hotline is a misnomer. It's really an emergency services number. It's staffed by a third-party answering service on behalf of our property management company. So they kind of triage probably for a number of different property managers, calls that come in. They're the kind of frontline assessment and then they would put the call out to property management. If someone were to call reporting heart symptoms, I would assume they would say, you know, you need to call 911. You don't have a property emergency. You have a health emergency. There were two other numbers that Jane listed. One is specifically for DMH clients that they do in fact have an emergency 24-hour service social worker kind of person who would, who would respond. And then CSO, Community Support Options, which is a large mental health provider in our area, also has, they are kind of the repository for referrals for someone who's having a mental health crisis after hours or on the weekend. They, they're a 24/7 service that anyone can call if they're having a mental health issue.
So if a person in crisis is not one of the two dedicated units for the DMH?
Yeah.
They can have, that is available for them?
Absolutely. And
For all the tenants?
One thing the Residential Services Coordinator can do is, you know, make these kind of resources readily available for people. So even if they're not on site, everybody kind of knows where you look for the directory of things. And tenants will help each other as well. So there's that. We did do a study of the timing of 911 calls at several of our other single-room occupancy properties over a period of several years. And we found the peak 911 call time was 1:00 PM. It's not to say that no one calls at night, but it was not the case that there was this blossoming of calls after hours. We, the data didn't show that at all.
Okay. So I want to give my other board members a chance to ask questions. So we'll run through and then I, I might have a couple after they all get a chance. Mr. Langsdale, do you have questions about the supportive services plan?
No, not, not at this time.
Ms. O'Meara?
No questions.
Ms. Parks?
No, I think you covered what I was thinking of.
Mr. Maxfield?
No, you pretty much hit any of the ones I was thinking about.
I did have one other, I think you've also talked about community engagement in the presentation. So I'll hold off on that question until that time.
Okay.
Let me just run through your plan to see if I had any other notes that I did not specifically have a question listed. So it occurs to me that one of the most important roles in making this housing successful, both for the tenants who receives a range of services as well as for the broader community, is the role of our, of the Residential Services Coordinator. I'll get that right now. Coordinator, not counselor. And in that, and I think your job description does a good job of doing that. Is this, can we, can we be assured that there will always be somebody from 25 to 30 hours available, which I think is ample time, which is a good amount of time dedicated to this particular property? Number one, can we be assured that that will be the case forever unless you come back and change it with us? Number one. Number two, tell me about how this is a part-time job for a college grad with, with experience. And what's the, and I anticipate that in today's market, there'd be a lot of people going for that. But historically, this would be, this may be a hard position to fill if you, if you're searching for somebody with a skill set. There'd be lots of, especially in this, in Western Massachusetts, there'd be a lot of opportunities for them to get full-time work with this. So talk to me about your ability to get that person and then how you work with them to make sure that they work with the clients and the best way to make, and the community in the best way to make this successful.
Sure. Yes. Part of our proposal is to commit to have this position onsite for this number of hours. Were we to make a significant deviation from that and that was a condition of our permit, we would need to return to the zoning board to have that conversation. Forever is a long time. And so, you know, if we find this person is idle, then we would come back and talk about that. I don't think that's going to be the case. I think it's going to be a really important position to have. And we're relying primarily upon the operating revenue of the property to pay for that position. So that is about the best you can do in terms of securing that ongoing funding for the position. I think that we, the part of the reason we are trying to stretch to 30 hours is usually that's when positions get benefited. And so, I mean, that would be our goal because I think we will attract a higher caliber of candidate with a benefited position. Chances are good, we will subcontract with a service, social service agency. And so they may well have someone who is doing this and something else. So they may well have, we may hire them and say, we need you to deliver these services 25 to 30 hours a week. And they may have a full-time person who's also doing some other work for them. I mean, I suspect that's the way it's actually going to play out. We don't think we're the best candidate to supervise and train and manage this person because it's a service position. And we like the segregation between the role of the landlord and the property management and the service provider.
I understand. So another possibility is grad students, people going for, maybe, would that also be a possibility for filling this, somebody pursuing a higher degree? Or is that not a likely candidate?
I would hope for someone with a little more maturity and feeling of authority to them. I wouldn't
Than a grad student, okay.
Wouldn't seek out a young person, just because many of our tenants will be older than that person. I think that creates a little bit, but with a phenomenal person, it could work. So, you know, it depends on the person, but I'm picturing someone a little more seasoned than a graduate student.
I think that helps. That helps me understand the, the role that you envisioned for the RCS.
And could I, Mr. Chairman, could I just add one more comment to what Laura said?
Yes.
I think that your point about the, Laura's point about the property management role in conjunction with the Residential Services Coordinator role is very important. And currently with HMR, we have a regularly scheduled meeting with service coordinators and property management staff so that we're discussing how the coordination of programs are going and any issues that are coming up so that we have, you know, really good, fluid conversations about best practices and particular things that are happening at the site. So that keeps the owner informed of both voices. So that allows us to gauge what's happening at the site. So that's currently a practice and it would continue to be a practice with this site.
Okay. Ms. O'Meara, did you have your hand up? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. I'm just wondering, the hiring of the RSC person, who's the backup for that person when they're not able to be onsite? Come down with an illness, COVID-19, whatever, whatever? What's the backup plan?
Yeah. So again, if, if we are hiring a third-party agency, presumably they will have many social workers and therapists and other clinicians. And they would need to provide a backup to that person if that person was out for an extended period of time.
So that would be within your contract?
Sure. Yeah. I guess we could terminate our contract if they weren't fulfilling it and hire somebody else. But yeah, that's the nice thing about hiring not, you know, Joe Miller, but hiring, you know, CSO or CDH, an entity is that it's, you're not just linked necessarily to one individual, that they're supposed to provide the service whether staff come or go.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. I have no further questions on the Social Services Plan. Did those, did their comments raise any questions to any other member? I guess, Maureen, I'd like to consider that we should put on the items to consider for conditions. Number one, that come back if they make a change in the hours or the significant change in the hours of the Residential Services Coordinator. And two, that their, that their contract provide for backup. If their contract with the company, the agency that's providing, has backup in case the Residential Services Coordinator is not there, something to that effect. We can consider those, but I'd like to keep that as a back of our mind. All right. I, just for the benefit of the board, at the, at last meeting, I said that I was Just for the benefit of the board, at the last meeting, I said that I was seriously contemplating the need for peer review of the social services plan. In that last month, I've done a lot of work talking to a lot of people, both here in Massachusetts and in other places. And this seems like this is a plan that is, that meets, in my mind, meets the sort of best practices of the industry, the people that provide this kind of housing and management of that housing and services. And so I am, I've become more aware and I'm not as concerned about the plan being insufficient. At least not to the point where I think it needs additional, needs peer review and we need to impose the additional costs on the applicant of that. Now, if other people feel differently than that, I think we should consider that we do have the ability to get peer reviews and that the cost of that is borne by the applicant. But I thought I was the one that raised that issue and I've been satisfied. And I'm open to anybody, if they have a desire for a peer review on this, we can discuss it. If not, we'll move on to the response to our questions from last week. Okay. Not hearing any questions or comments in that regard. Let's move on to your responses to the questions we posed at last week. And after we do that, we can go into the other items on the agenda. And one thing I'd like to do so we keep this moving throughout the meeting is let's deal with each question individually and provide the answer to the question. If there are any discussion about it, let's have it at that point and then move on. And for this one, as opposed to having all the questions done at once and then our questions and our comments about the whole packet, let's try to answer each one of these individually. So the first one you have, I think, is, if I remember correctly, oh, I can't pull it up on my screen. But I'd like to run through this serially and so that we can do it the most efficient way without trying to cobble everything together at the end, okay?
I would add that we provided this PowerPoint presentation advanced to the board, not way in advance, but a little bit in advance so that hopefully you could read through it so that I could move through it quickly and we wouldn't have to spend a lot of time on it. And I would say both to the board and to the public that these things also get posted online. Some of my slides have a lot of words on them. If you miss all the words, it's always possible to go back later and review them again. So I'm going to go to share screen now if I'm authorized to do that. Maureen?
Yes, you should be authorized. Have you tried it?
Just doing it now.
Okay.
All right, look away, I'm going to go way down. Don't get seasick.
I think we've done that.
All right. So we did this.
Yep.
These are our responses to questions asked prior. The first was about the, really clarification about the snow removal area. So I apologize, last time it seemed there was some confusing information that was shared. So I think we've got a plan. The kind of orangish parts you see are areas that we would need to clear of snow and ice. The blue areas are places where we would stockpile snow and push snow in the event of a snowstorm. Part of our discussion about deicing methods came from the fact that we are showing snow and being pushed against vegetation. And I think we've covered pretty thoroughly the different deicing products that we would use so that we would cause minimal harm to these vegetation here. We are proposing a new change in the site plan, which is to shift the bike rack. So instead of going this way, it's going this way. And that will allow more snow to be piled here. This area is for a large snow. If we ran out of all these other places to push snow and we consistently observed that there were empty parking spaces at this site, then we might stockpile snow in some parking areas. If the parking areas are fairly consistently used, that would not be the case. This is to explain the snow removal plan as it relates to the parking. So using any parking areas for snow storage is secondary to the other snow storage areas that we just looked at on the plan. On-site parking areas will only be used for snow storage if there's a consistent pattern of under-usage of spaces. For example, if there are consistently six open spaces, then a portion of these can serve as backup snow storage. If most parking spaces are full most of the time, then no parking areas will be used for snow storage. If the designated areas are inadequate, likely during a very heavy snowfall, excess snow will be removed from the site. Pick it up and put it in a dump truck and take it off-site. We were asked-
So that was snow. Are there any questions on snow? We've discussed this a lot. Is there any, I'd like to put, I'd like to put the snow to rest if we're done talking about this. Unless there's any questions.
Yes, I have a question about that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So you say under utilization. What counts as under utilization there? Because if you say, you know, maybe four days out of a month, you have only five available parking spaces. And that's six one, you know, being used, you wouldn't be able to put snow in that area. You know, that would mean that somebody is consistently parking there once a week. I guess I just want to know is, what's really going to be your determination there? Because I'm a little weary of putting that into the, putting that final determination of what counts as under utilization into, is the sole determination to CDC because they have the, like anybody, you have the financial incentive to put where it is easiest. And then of course, you know, on the other hand, I also don't want to do the, be unnecessarily burdensome and say you have to remove snow off-site when-
Right, right.
But I guess the idea is, is there something we could do perhaps where we would say for something like a year, the first year that this is in place, where all snow would have to be removed off-site? And then we might say, any additional snow would have to be removed off-site and couldn't be put in that space. But then perhaps after a year, come back to the board and simply say, this was the results of what we'd observed in that first year. And then the ZBA could make a decision on whether or not it wants to approve snow being put into-
So here's what I would say is that, yes, there's a financial disincentive to take snow off-site, but there's an even more immediate disincentive to not take parking that people need because they will complain and they will complain to us. So we are not all motivated to take away parking from tenants and staff and visitors who need it because we will hear about it. We have no, that, we don't want to do that. So we will be looking for, if we're seeing that about half the spaces are open most of the time, I'm going to feel really comfortable taking the two spaces furthest from the property, for example, and pile in some snow there. If we see a scattering of parking patterns where, you know, at a given time, most of the spaces are occupied or even occasionally most of the spaces are occupied, we're just going to take it off the table, that we're not going to put snow there. And it's a little bit of a, I feel like we do need some discretion to actually witness the actual conditions that are occurring on the site. But I would suggest to you that the disincentive is greater than the incentive. I would rather pay a bill for trucking snow off-site than have tenants calling because they can't park.
You know, I suppose, I suppose that's fair. I just know as a tenant myself, typically it's never, it's never a pleasant experience for me to have to call my landlord to ask him to do something that they should be doing in the first place is my only concern. And I, I wouldn't want to put that burden on the tenants. But again, this isn't that much of a sticking point for me. If the board feels one way or the other about it, I'd like to hear what the other members' thoughts are on this. Is anybody else as concerned as I am about this? And what does anybody else think?
Well, I think, I, Mr. Maxfield, what I think is that you've raised the concerns, this should be listed as one of the areas, one of the conditions that we'll consider later on. And we can have a discussion about people's, I don't think we're going to get any more new information. So later on, when we do go through the conditions and there'll be many of them we have to go through, we can discuss this one and make, and discuss it and decide whether we want this to be a condition that, as you just described, which is a one-year trial period and then come back and come to the board and we can make a decision. So I'd prefer not to, unless somebody has new questions, not to spend more time on this. But we know that we can discuss it when we go and talk about conditions on the application. Is that fair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So another way to condition it might be, for example, you know, we run a log. We see that we consistently have three spaces open. You know, we can use one for snow storage, make some kind of ratio. That would be another proposal because each year, the snowfall is really different.
So those are all good things we can discuss when we get to conditions for the project, the application. I think we've, I think we've run through the snow removal. Unless anybody else has new questions, let's move on to the next question. Parking.
So related to this is parking. So the chairman asked to see comparables. And so this chart actually was included in our zoning application. It's in the parking study section. And it takes you through a number of similar affordable properties. Some of them valley-owned, some of them are owned by other entities, Wayfinders, Home City Housing Development. So we looked at the number of people, adults, people who might drive cars who live in them, the parking that's provided at these locations and then the average daily parking that's used based on the observation of the management companies. And then we made a ratio. So a lot of properties simply have no parking. So the fact that no one's parking there isn't that meaningful because it doesn't have any parking. So of all the properties, it was a .22 per unit utilization. The average utilization for properties where there is parking provided was .49. And as people may recall, we're proposing a .57 ratio of parking spaces to units. I also just happened to be at one of our good comparables, the Sergeant House. This is 10:00 AM this morning. We have 28 tenants who've already moved into this property. They're very similar, small studio apartment units. I was there, there were 14 spaces are provided maximum for this site this morning. Seven spaces were in use, which is .25 spaces per unit. And this is just a snapshot, this is just a point in time. But we do see a consistent pattern with this type of housing that we're looking at between .25 and .5 cars per unit.
Can you go back to the chart?
Sure.
It seems to me that the applicable comparisons are the affordable, single-person studio apartments. And there doesn't, you know, there doesn't seem, it's all over the place. You've got zero, you've got zero again, you've got not applicable because not yet occupied. You've got 57, .57, and then you've got zero again. So it's really hard to see that there's a pattern out there. What you are, you've come in the middle of that. As good as, you're at, you're at 16 units for 28 people, 16 parking spots for 28 people. Is that residence, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I think it's hard to draw, hard to draw a standard from the single-person studio apartment that you've shown here. So I guess it's, my thinking is it's pretty much up to you to decide what is reasonable as long as it doesn't create problems for the neighbors. And it doesn't seem that anybody has more. Any single unit, single-person studio apartments has more than you have provided, has a higher percentage of parking spaces to tenants than you have.
Well, this example down here, which is in Springfield, has a lot of parking per unit, but they gave me their count of how many cars they see parked. And this is, this is the kind of scenario that we would hope to avoid where, you know, we're putting down a lot of pavement that isn't being used.
Yeah. But utilization at that place is 34. Utilization at the other single studio apartment is 50. Earl Street is .57.
Yeah. There's some variance. Earl Street is located, it's a little over a mile to walk to the center of North Hampton. It's a little further, it's more of an, you know, there are lots of factors. In the parking study that we delivered, we gave these comparables and we cited data from a number of different studies, parking studies that you could look at.
Okay. Well, you've provided me the answer that I requested. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
I would also add that when we went to the planning board, the chair made the comment that she thought that the parking provided was appropriate for the use. At that point in time, we only had 14 parking spaces. And I would notice that the town engineer, when he reviewed the site plans, said he did not have any issue with the traffic or parking studies that were provided.
Any other, any board member have questions regarding parking?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused. The 16 spaces that you have are all, it includes one space for handicap parking?
Two.
Two, sorry. So then you have 14 spaces left. Are those to be used by staff?
Yes.
And how many of those are on at one time?
So I anticipate that there would be potentially one or two staff. But as we reviewed last time, there is a natural ebb and flow. Those tenants who are driving to work will tend to be gone during the day. The staff that are there will tend to be there during the day. So it won't be everybody there at the same moment in time. So when I looked this morning at Sergeant House, for example, I think two of these, one or two of these cars were actually property management staff. I think if I went back at night, those cars would be gone and there would probably be a few more tenant cars here. It's just a guess. But there is a coming and going and sharing of the use of spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Further questions on parking? In a related, if not, in a related matter, there's the loading area. There any questions about that?
So this is a broad look. I'm going to take you to a little bit of a close-up view. So we have two options for some, we're assuming a paratransit kind of van is coming to pick up someone who's, who needs that service. What we imagine is that if this space is empty, which it could be, we might not have enough tenants who have stickers for this, or they might be out, that the van would pull in here, the person would exit. This is never going to be parked on, this is a loading area. Someone would load into the van this way. If these two spaces are filled, the van would pull up directly in front of the loading area. Person would exit and load this way. And then the van would make the same turnaround maneuver that the dumpster truck will make and go out this way.
Question?
I'm gonna, I'll keep rolling unless people want to, just shout them out. A typical kitchen elevation with the adjacent closet, we're providing that here. So in this plan, we have a kitchenette. And it will have a full-size, full-capacity kind of refrigerator, a sink area, a 24-inch range. We'll have a microwave and a hood up here and then some cabinetry. We have a closet adjacent to it that's three feet, six inches wide. This is a suggestion, I think it's a good one, of how to divide that closet space with kind of taller hanging things here, shorter hanging things here, and then several shelves up above. In some units, we have more closet space than others. So this example is where we have the least amount of closet space based on the unit layout. We have several kinds of units that just happen to be configured differently because of the shape of the building. So you can see this unit, for example, has two closets. This unit has a longer closet. And this unit over here has a triple closet. We're also noticing that we have a good opportunity, it's not drawn in here, to have a linen closet that is between the shower unit and the vanity in the bathrooms. So that is something that we are going to try to incorporate into the plans as well that would provide some additional storage area.
Let's make sure people get a chance to answer. Because I know Mr. Langsdale had a question about this. Any questions? Okay. Smoking.
We had- Um, we had a a number of questions over a long period of time about the smoking uh bench. Uh, at this point, we're proposing to remove it from the site and that both the building and the site would be smoke-free. Uh, if you are in agreement and concept, what we would do is revise the site plan. We'd still have a, a sidewalk that wraps around so that you can get to the patio from the front, but it would not have that bench and pavilion for smoking. Um, and we might shift the garden area a little bit um when we make the shape of the sidewalk a little different, but it won't significantly uh change the site plan.
All right, no questions, move on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I just, I just love to point out that uh, you know, I think I, I might be a little in disagreement with the rest of uh or some of the other ZBA members here. I definitely want to see um that parking or that uh, that smoking bench uh in the, in the proposal. I appreciate an alternative as I, I, I think when it, it comes to conditions, we might differ on that, it may come to a vote, but I, I personally wouldn't, wouldn't like to be known that I, I do want to see a uh smoking area in the proposal and I think the original proposal was a uh, was a good place for that to be.
I, I think you, you raise a good question and the question that I would have is what percentage of how likely is it that people will not um, who are smokers, potential tenants who are smokers will not take advantage of the, of the units because of that? And number two, if they are smokers, they will find their way to smoking someplace on the street or someplace else.
Sure.
So obviously had, had a thought about this.
Yep, people who smoke will find a place to smoke. Uh, people will not, we do not find smokers declining affordably units because they're smoke-free, pretty much they're all becoming smoke-free and the need for affordable housing is desperate. So people don't turn it down for that reason. Um, people will tend to gravitate toward the closest place where smoking is permitted. Um, we see that consistently. So in Amherst, smoking is permitted on sidewalks, on streets, in downtown, it's permitted outdoors in all public areas as far as I know. Um, so that's, that's probably the logical alternative.
So there'll be smoking on the sidewalk out in front if the property is non-smoking.
That's was our argument, that was our argument for providing a designated area on-site because we wanted to take the burden onto the property itself for people smoking. But we've heard consistent um feedback from neighbors that they want it to be a non-smoking property. Nobody wants this particular item to be adjacent to them. Um, so it's fine, we can, we can make it a smoke-free uh property. We have other ones that are smoke-free, so it won't be the first one.
All right, again, that's something we can discussion, conditions.
Um, and I would, I would add, Mr. Langsdale, I heard your comment about, you know, five or six people smoking that we don't observe that. Um, people are a little ashamed that they smoke, honestly, in today's um culture. So it tends to be, one, maybe two people smoking at the same time. We do not witness groups of people getting together and smoking. Uh, property and asset management plans, uh, it just was a clarification that the plans have not changed. So the full plans are within the application itself and then we were asked to provide summaries, which we did, but we didn't change the content of those plans. Written narrative about the tenant referral and selection process, this gets a little wordier, I'm afraid.
This is an important thing, so I, I think it's good for us to understand it.
Okay. Um, as in any, you know, publicly-supported development, we have to have selection and screening criteria that are consistent, that we apply consistently to applicants and that we administer fairly. Um, an important part of our uh state funding packet will be called an affirmative fair housing marketing plan. They also ask for a tenant selection plan. These documents can run up to sixty to eighty pages each. So they're very detailed looks at making sure that we're not creating any fair housing barriers to tenants and that we have a viable way to select tenants. So I give the ZBA assurance that the state looks at these very, very carefully before they fund a project and they would not approve a plan that did not comply with fair housing laws. Um, so the marketing time period, when it begins and when it ends, the methods of outreach, the lottery process and the tenant selection procedures all have to be vetted uh by the state agency. So we are required to not discourage or prevent members of any protected class from being evaluated equally as prospective tenants. And those protected classes, classes are listed here, uh race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and familial status. We use affirmative proactive marketing procedures and materials to ensure access to housing by vulnerable, underserved, and at-risk populations. This may mean where things are advertised, what languages they're translated into, the fact that someone with a disability has assistance in filling out an application, things of that nature. The screening criteria again must be applied equally. So applicants must demonstrate that they meet the criteria through the following methods. We do credit checks, we do query checks, we do landlord references. If someone has been homeless for a period of time and they don't have landlord references, we can accept service provider references in lieu of those landlord references. We interview all the tenants who are going to be living there. We do a determination of income eligibility that relies on third-party documentation. And for handicapped accessible units, someone must demonstrate that they need that type of adaptive unit um in order to get that unit. There are some kind of hard and fast reasons for denial, uh having to do with uh past criminal record. Uh, sex offenders, anyone listed on the state registry for sex offenders is not um included in our tenants. Uh, someone with a history of production or distribution of methamphetamine, uh, it's a federal requirement that we cannot take anyone with such a history. Uh, and criminal records of offenses that involve physical danger, violence to persons or property or that adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of other people. So someone who has a record of arson, for example, would not be allowed uh to live in this property. Um, so we don't accept tenants we believe would pose a threat to any other tenants uh or to neighbors. And we also would assert that this level of screening and due diligence, in particular running query checks, is more comprehensive than is undertaken by most private landlords. So how are tenants referred to the property when they're in a special kind of category? So referrals from the Department of Mental Health uh are for persons who are clients who are receiving, consistently receiving services from, from Department of Mental Health. We're proposing two units that have this priority. Referrals will be made from the Western Mass Department of Mental Health. Uh, these referred, once a tenant is referred uh from DMH, they go through the same screening process I described above. So if they don't meet muster in the screening process, Valley or our property management company will reject that referred tenant and DMH will propose a different client. Uh, clients who are referred by DMH receive ongoing services provided directly by DMH such as case management and clinical services. But a lot of questions about how, who are homeless people and how are they prioritized and how do they enter the property? Uh, most often, referrals are made by service providers who are vouching for the prospective tenant, assess that the tenant is an appropriate candidate for independent living with supports. So there are a variety of models of housing people. Jane went over some of them uh last, the last hearing. So group homes, there's a, a safe haven model for homeless persons who need twenty-four-hour support. Those wouldn't be viable candidates for this particular property. If a homeless applicant is not affiliated already with a service provider, we'll seek to make a match since we have pretty close working relationships with providers. If someone has a history of substance abuse, they need to demonstrate six months of sobriety before moving in. Uh, the service provider who's referring the tenant commits in writing to provide ongoing support services for the referred tenant for a period of time and typically it's really that first year that's so critical to help the person kind of transition and stabilize in the new housing and make community-based connections. Um, the whole goal is for that provider then to step back and that the person will have made community-based supports and will have them set up. If in the future a tenant faces challenges, it is very common that the original service provider will kind of re-enter the picture uh and work more intensively with the tenant again. So someone might be doing fine and then they have a trauma, you know, a family member dies, a friend overdoses, something happens and they need more help. Um, homeless tenants must also meet the screening criteria described above. So all the query and, and those other reference um items that I described. The definition of homelessness relates to a person's housing status. It's their lack of housing. And there are a lot of reasons, some of which are listed here when, where someone may not have housing or be threatened with not having housing. It is not a definition about a person's criminal, history of criminal activity or substance abuse or mental illness. And again, this is a distinction between a general homeless population and a chronically homeless population where it's both. It's the long-term housing instability coupled with a serious um disability that creates that definition of chronically homeless. I'm going to move to transportation, so I guess I'll
Well, don't do that yet. I appreciate you want to move through this, but I think there's some, there might be some questions on tenant referrals. Um, first off, what's query? For me, I have one que- one question, what's query?
So query is a criminal records check. So the tenant signs their um consent um and you, it goes into a database and the database tells you whether someone has a criminal um background. It's a criminal background check, basically.
All right. And then it's ACC and um Elliott that provide you most of your, that you anticipate providing you most of your referrals?
Um, I think they will provide some.
Chronically homeless.
Yep, Craig Stores may provide referrals, ServiceNet may provide referrals, CSO may provide referrals, CDH. I mean, there's a number of players. Um, but we work a lot with Elliott and because this is in Amherst, I anticipate we'll work also with Amherst Community Connections.
And when they provide you those referrals, have they done a similar check? And so this is in effect a second check? Or?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay. So it's, it's the, the real, the, the, the most important check is done by, by your operation. And is that done by the management company?
Yes.
So that, what's the name of the management company again?
It's HMR standing for Housing Management Resources.
So the manage, the, the management company will do that?
Yes.
All right. And that's the landlord? They're also the landlord, correct?
Well, they, they're acting on behalf of the property owner. So Valley's in essence the managing property owner. We hire on an annual contract HMR to do property management services.
Okay. Do people have questions about the tenant referrals? Ms. Parks?
Um, I'm just wondering about local preference. Um, when you're talking about service providers, I was thinking that you would mainly be using Amherst service providers, but that may not be true. Um, and so, um, and, and I was hearing what you were saying about um needing to show that you're not discriminating against anyone. Uh, but um, so I, I just don't know, where are we standing with local preference? Are we?
You know, we're, we're going to be, yeah, that's, Ms. Parks, we have that on the agenda for uh the fourth item tonight to talk about local preference, yep.
I guess I thought that was here, okay.
Yep, but it, it, we, we will get to it, we hope to get to it tonight. Other questions?
Uh, yes, I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Maxfield.
Uh, yeah, so the referrals are made by service providers. So uh, is it, you folks have a roster of service providers that you consult with? Or is this, this posted somewhere and anybody who's uh qualified as a service provider can can see that there's a housing availability and, and speak to you guys directly? How do you guys get in touch with these service providers?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I, I have, to my knowledge, we have a pretty lengthy kind of listserv of local providers and we do a blast out to all of those people, there might be thirty or forty. So it, I don't know that there's any public posting. Um, if it's a wheelchair accessible unit, we're required to post it on a certain um state website. With these units, I think we just try to get a pretty broad outreach to service providers. But we do have tenants who are on our waitlist also, who are coming in self-identifying that, that they're homeless. And so we would look at that pool of people as well.
Um, so if you, if you were to have a homeless person say uh come to you folks directly, you would potentially refer them to a service provider and then, and that would be the, the process for?
Yeah, well, we would try to do a little bit of matchmaking so that when they were coming into housing from a homeless situation, they had the support.
Got it, got it, thank you.
Um, any other questions? All right. Go ahead.
Sure, just, just as an aside, um, on Valley's website, you all could pull down an application, uh pre-application for our housing and it does ask if you're homeless. And so we maintain waitlists of, of folks who are looking for housing, both whether they're looking for subsidized housing, market-rate housing, if they're homeless. So, so we have already on hand a pretty extensive waitlist of people, just to let you know. Um, so the resident service coordinator, how, how would this person assist tenants with transportation options? We were wanting more detail about that. So within the uh supportive services plan, um, these things are enumerated. Uh, activities, posting uh schedules in the common room, organizing shared rides, helping tenants procure bus and bike share passes as applicable, um, helping tenants access public transportation options such as the PV, oops, PVPa, PVTA van service and the Amherst COA van service, and providing rides as scheduled permits or in emergency. Um, we will require the, the resident service coordinator to have a car and insurance, we'll, we'll carry an umbrella insurance policy. It is extremely helpful for that person to be able to give rides in a pinch or in an organized fashion. We do not expect that person to be riding people around all week, all week long. Um, and one thing we're adding here, because someone brought it up at another meeting, we think it's a great idea, is purchasing several of these grocery pull carts that we would just have at the property. People sign them in, sign them out, when they bring them back, helps a little bit with that issue of, you know, getting groceries from the grocery store to the property. Um, what are the transportation options? So again, this is an excerpt taken right from the draft supportive services plan. I've, I've abbreviated it a bit, so there's a little more detail in the plan. So we believe this is a highly walkable location. That there are stores and services in downtown Amherst within a half to eight tenths of a mile and major shopping centers on University Drive within six to eight tenths of a mile. Uh, Mass DOT uh plans, and their plans are a hundred percent design status currently, to improve the sidewalks and crossings on North Hampton Road beginning in 2021. I think they'll have a two-season cycle, so they'll start in 2021 and, and finish in 2022. Uh, this includes widening the sidewalks on both sides of North Hampton Road all the way from University up to Town Center on the north and south sides. All of their sidewalks will meet ADA standards and they'll install two new crosswalks equipped with flashing lights at the intersections of Orchard and Hazel Streets. Uh, these wider improved sidewalks will improve pedestrian safety and facilitate clearing snow in the winter because it is hard to walk on sidewalks if there's snow and ice on them. Uh, we believe it's a bike-friendly location and there's a well-used and well-maintained bike trail that's very close to this property. It's an eleven-mile-long trail, connects Amherst to Belchtown, Hadley, North Hampton, and East Hampton. There are two Valley Bike Share stations within walking distance of 132 North Hampton Road. One's in Town Center and one's on University Drive. You can, you know, pay one, one, for one-time use or monthly or annually. These are electric assist to bikes. Uh, there's a bike shop, Hampshire Bicycle Exchange, uh located on University Drive where you can buy, uh rent, get fixed, anything like that with a bike. Um, public bus service, there are about half a dozen PVTA bus stops located uh in, around, circling around 132 North Hampton Road, ranging from four tenths to six tenths of a mile. You can walk downhill to get to a bus stop, you can walk flat across to get to a bus stop, or you can walk uphill to get to a bus stop. Uh, during normal college openings, buses run daily except on major holidays. You can pay by the ride or get a monthly bus pass and you can get discounted bus passes at Big Y. So transportation for special populations, those folks who might not have the ability to walk or bike places. So the town of Amherst offers van service for seniors and persons of any age with a disability that prevent them from using the typical bus service. And this is just some information about the cost, depending on the distance and the fact that these vans will travel to any location within Hampshire and Hampden and the fact that these vans will travel to any location within Hampshire and Hampden Counties. You do need to provide notice and schedule this ahead of time. Similarly, the PVTA has its paratransit vans, which are door-to-door transportation for people who are 60 or older. Again, you have to call and schedule it ahead and there are van tickets purchased through the senior center. PVTA also has ADA paratransit vans. So they're for persons with a disability of any age that prevent them from using a fixed bus route. They can be booked during the weekend holidays and if you require PCA to travel with you, that person rides for free. The resident services coordinator will be responsible for coordinating other transportation options for tenants. This may include tenants who do not have car-sharing rides, are giving rides to those who do, or coordinating community volunteers to provide rides. Since patrons can only use the, access the Amherst Survival Center food pantry once a month, the RSC may coordinate, for example, a monthly ride to the pantry for several tenants. So that's kind of what I mean about the efficiency of driving people. So if you can take four people to the food pantry once a month, everybody loads up and comes back, that's a great use of that RSC time as opposed to individual trips. The RSC will help tenants access subsidized fares, as may be applicable for bus and Valley Bike Share passes. As I mentioned, they're required to have a vehicle and a license and Valley will carry umbrella insurance for this purpose, for their, to cover their liability when they're driving folks around. Well, I'll go, I'll keep going and then we'll see if there's questions.
Let's just see if there's any questions on the transportation before we get to the hill.
Ups and downs.
Okay. I don't see any hands up, so, um, let's go to the hill.
Okay, the hill. So when I was scouting properties for this development, I looked at many locations and almost all of them involved an uphill climb to get to the center of town. So down Main Street, down College Street, down North Hampton Road. Somebody built Amherst on top of a hill and so it, it's just there. And we all need to kind of grapple with it. Although Mr. Langsdale and others have mentioned that it can be a barrier or a difficulty or a challenge navigating this hill, especially if you have a, a mobility issue, I just would like, in no way to disagree with that, but simply to say, at the same time, there are significant health benefits associated with walking and especially walking on an incline. And we're not talking about people having to walk miles and miles. This is, this is a 10 to 12-minute walk. If you do it every day, it's going to be a benefit both for your physical and your mental health. So just pulled some, some data from an article I found, "Why Walking Is The Most Underrated Exercise", is the title of it. "It improves fitness, cardiac, et cetera." "When comparing the results of the most recent National Runners Health Study, found that vigorous walking, moderate intensity walking, such as you do on an incline, and vigorous intensity running resulted in similar reductions in risk for high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes and heart disease. Walking also has been shown to improve memory and prevent the deterioration of brain tissues as we age. Studies indicate the exercise relieves anxiety and depression and suggests that a 10-minute walk may be just as good as 45-minute workout when it comes to relieving the symptoms of anxiety and boosting mood." So we have a population that is, has been through challenging times and maybe, may be prone to experiencing anxiety and depression. So being in the outdoors and walking is a really, really positive thing. So the value of inclined walking, the higher set the incline, the more energy your body is forced to use. It can be a better option for those with injuries or pain. So adding an incline is a great way to increase the challenge for your heart and get the same kind of benefits that you can get from jogging or running without the same amount of wear and tear on your knees. So again, not to take away from the fact that if it's leading out and you need two gallons of milk, the hill is not your friend. But 90% of the time, the fact that there's a necessity to do some exercise, walking on an incline, we consider that a potential benefit from this location. So it's, it's a mixed, I, I just think it's a mixed bag. Also, we-
Questions about the hill?
Yeah, I have a, I have something to say.
Yep. Mr. Langsdale?
I understand your desire to put the best face on this up and downhill. And the article speaks to the benefits of walking, which I think is quite obvious to all of us. But what we're dealing with here is the situation of where you're going to be located and you're talking about people, some with disabilities, some with, um, substance abuse problems, uh, walking uphill with groceries in hand or with the cart, but pushing a cart up the hill is not easy. Uh, if it's, if you've got groceries in it. And it also doesn't take into account that there is, uh, a fair amount of rain in, in this part of the world. In the winter, there can be a great deal of snow and ice. I think we've all been aware over the last couple of months or approximately that not only does it get hot here, it gets very humid. So to say that you're not trying to take away from the problem, possible problems by giving us this account of the health benefits of walking, I think is a little bit disingenuous because it, you're not at all addressing the possible problems with those walks. Rather, you're just giving us a general health benefit. So, you know, I don't know what's to be done about this, but I, I, I just think it's important to, for everyone to understand that we're not talking about a walk in the woods here. And we're not talking about a walk in the woods through a lot of different conditions during the year in this area. Thank you.
So another thing that we wanted to just note for the committee is that the Black Sheep just got an award to transition to a grocery-style marketplace. And so the Black Sheep is located about a fifth, about half a mile from the site. And so if someone were to do their shopping there, uh, they would not needing, be needing to pull groceries uphill. They would be traveling downhill from that location. I do feel like the prior pages, extensive information about the various transportation options speaks to the point of folks who might have challenges with walking because I think there are a lot of different options to get around in Amherst, thankfully. Let's see, integration with the neighborhood. Have there been problems between tenants and the neighbors or the community? If so, how did, how was it dealt with and do we have any examples to provide? And so part of our supportive services plan includes a tenant engagement section that we'll review in brief. We'd just also note that we have tenants serving on Valley's Community Engagement Committee, which is a board committee. And they plan events annually that bring together our tenants, residents and the larger community. We do ice cream socials, we've done block parties. What we're thinking of for this site at 132 was to do a welcome event and then we have a number of ways that we thought people could, ongoing ways that residents could connect with neighbors. Social events, a jobs board, shared gardening, tutorials, mentoring, transportation, similar to the COA ride programs or neighbor-to-neighbor ride shares. Tenants needing transportation could be assisted by neighbors. So again, another approach at accommodating people who might need special transportation. We provided four letters from direct neighbors to our single-person occupancy properties in North Hampton. You can find these letters within the, the project eligibility letter section on the website. And these are the names of the authors of those letters. I didn't want to reproduce the whole letters because they're lengthy, so I just took some quotes. So the first one reads, "At this time, we have not had any issues or complaints from our customers." It's the person who runs the, a cafe that's located in the same building as a single-room occupancy property. "Regarding the residents and their actions, any minor items that have come up regarding the tenants in our business space have been promptly taken care of through communication with the office staff at Valley. At this time, we are very happy sharing this building space with the residents." Another person who's saying, "In eight years, not one of my professional tenants nor any of their clients have ever received anything less than pleasantness from our studio apartment dwelling neighbors." And the third one describes an issue, uh, the one issue that has come up with the building is that a few, I'm sorry, I've got something blocking, months ago, a very loud engine-like sound started coming out of the building. "As soon as I reached out to Valley CDC, I was put in touch with the building manager and slowly we were able to identify the sound, which is an issue with the new heating system and they were able to get the contractors out to fix the situation. I felt that having an organization as a neighbor actually made that situation a bit easier because they are very motivated to make their neighbors satisfied. That is not always the case with an individual homeowner. I have, have only had pleasant interactions with any of the residents of the building, but I must say I hardly see them, the curse of our busy lives." So again, full letters are available through the town's website. So last year, uh, we looked at, I mentioned this before, we did an analysis of 911 call data for Valley's four single-room occupancy properties, which house 53 individuals over a three-year period. During this three years, for these four properties, there were two calls initiated by a neighbor. They were both noise complaints. There are zero calls initiated by neighbors that related to harm or harm to people or property. After owning single-room occupancy properties for 30 years, Valley has received only a handful of calls from neighbors, the issues being reported. And here are a few examples, tenants putting trash in the wrong place in a shared dumpster area, care of shared landscaping or noise have been promptly addressed by property management. Valley posts its 24/7 emergency call number for property management at all its properties. This number will be available also to neighbors in the event that they need to contact property management directly. Valley staff, myself, Jane, are readily available by email or phone. Our contact information is posted on Valley's website and we are committed to safe and well-kept conditions at our properties with the mutual benefit of residents and neighbors." This is the last piece. Okay.
Go ahead. I don't, I don't think there's any questions on the, that was my question and you've answered it.
Just for clarification, we have, we have a recurring question about height because it's a little confusing, as well as the number of floors. These are excerpts directly from Amherst zoning bylaw, they're definitions. So, "In all districts, the minimum or maximum height of building shall be measured as the vertical distance from the average finished grade on the street side of the structure to the average height midpoint between the highest eaves and ridge of the main body of the roof." So, and then they show you a little illustration here. This is how we're measuring the height of a building that has a gable roof. And the next slide, I'm going to show you our building. Minimum or maximum floors. "A basement half-story shall be any lawful habitated space with required means of access and egress and which a minimum seven-foot floor-to-ceiling height exists in at least half of the habitable space, but no less than one-third of the habitable floor area of the full story above and where more than half of the habitable space is located above the average finished grade of the exterior of the building," which meets the definition of our ground floor space. So as opposed to being a basement which is zero floors because it's fully below grade, our basement is defined as a half-story because it has enough area that's above grade. So when we describe it as a two-and-a-half-story building, it's not an attempt to disguise it as something. It's really just an attempt to accurately apply the definitions that are in the Amherst zoning bylaw. So here is the same look at our particular building. So showing you the, the eve height, 31 feet 2 inches, the roof ridge height of 44, almost 45 feet, and the mean height of 38 feet 4 inches, bringing it in below the maximum height for the zone of 40 feet. And this assumes basically the worst-case scenario. So in reality, the grade on the front of the building is kind of sloping, but we, we took the most conservative look at height and took it from its lowest point. We were asked to compare it to the existing house and Tom, our architect, tried his best he could to give you a fair comparison of the existing house and how it looks compared with the, the height and the massing of the new building. And that brings us to the conclusion of our responses.
Ms. Huggins or Ms. Carbone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a thought on that, on building height in the applicant's presentation, whenever is the appropriate time for me to-
Right now is good.
Sure, so, um, I think this is an important issue and I might suggest that if the board has any questions about the building height under the zoning bylaw, that it asks the building commissioner for comment on that. In that way, the board will know what it's looking at under the bylaw and any relief needed can be requested by the applicant for the board's consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Langsdale?
The existing house, is that a three-story house?
The existing house is, let's see. I think the assessor's records call it a one-and-a-half-story house, but that may not be consistent with actually the zoning bylaw definition. I'm not sure. It has, it has finished space in the basement level. It's a walkout basement with a bathroom and a bedroom downstairs. Has a full first floor and it has three bedrooms upstairs on the second floor, but they're essentially in the, in the attic space. So, Tom, do you, do you have an opinion on that?
I mean, I think that would probably be called a two-and-a-half-story house because all the floor, those bedrooms are habitable space, they have sufficient height and-
So what constitutes a three-bedroom, a three-story house? I mean, this says three stories, each one of them with-
If the site, if the site was completely level, this would be a three-story house. It's the fact that it slopes and part of, part of both buildings are buried in, in the hillside.
Mr. Langsdale, would it help if we asked the building commissioner to take a look at this and to describe to us the, what practical differences it makes to be called three-story or two-and-a-half-story? And then we, we could, you know, make a decision on that? You think that might be the best way to proceed? Because I'm not sure that I, I don't know that I know what the difference is and what the significance is and perhaps a, an expert like the building commissioner could help us with this.
Yeah, my, my question comes from, even if this is a two-and-a-half-story house, it's 27 feet high. What they're proposing is 44, almost 45 feet high. And it's a two-and-a-half-story building. So I guess part of my question is, why is it so much higher? It's like 18 feet higher.
Yeah, there, there is a full other living floor on our building. So in our attic, this is the attic, right? There's no living area there, whereas in this house, the attic has living area. This house has one basically full story above grade. We have two full stories above grade. So you have a whole other floor added to this building. So it is a taller building.
The, the, just, the existing house has that floor tucked under the roofline as opposed to the roof sitting up above that floor, that top one.
So why, is it not been possible to have your building have that top floor tucked under the roof? Like the existing-
Because we couldn't, we wouldn't have the area, and when you do that, you lose at least a third or half of the area to, to the-
Well, what's, what's in that? You've got the, from the eve height, which is 31, you go up basically 14 feet to the roof ridge height. What's in that 14 feet?
Well, that's, if you look, if you can see the elevations, that's just the pitch of the roof. If you start out at the eve and you have a certain width building, a certain slope to the roof, by the time you cross all that area, you end up at that height.
So there are roof trusses in that space? There's probably about two feet of insulation in that space? And there are some, probably some mechanicals, electric or whatnot?
Mechanicals were down below on the, on the lowest level.
Yeah, there are no mechanicals. There's nothing in the roof area except insulation and sprinklers.
Insulation and what?
Sprinkler pipings, there are sprinkler heads required within the, within the attic.
So, let's do this. So, let's do this, let's, we'll refer the question to the commissioner, and then when we deal with aesthetics and a later point in our discussion, we have a topic on how it fits with the neighborhood, for lack of a better term, physical amenities, layout, et cetera, in another time. We can talk about it at that point, Keith, how's that?
Thank you.
You bet. I think that's the end of the questions, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members before we move to the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Commissioner, oh, sorry, Mr. Judge, both Dick Woskiewicz and Rachel Laffier, sorry, Rachel, I don't know how to say your last name, have raised their hands.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay. Mr. Woskiewicz.
So what was presented does meet zoning. The question of why it's so high is more of a design question, that can be addressed by a different pitch in the roof. Like was mentioned by the architect, it's the width of the structure, so you're comparing a smaller house with a larger structure. I don't know what the original building looks like in terms of a full basement, full walkout, or if it's a crawl space, so all these factors come into play, but I think ultimately it does meet the zoning requirements. The three stories is the maximum, and the height is met by what has been shown with the average of the overall height of the roof, so I'm not sure what else you would like to know about.
So I think that, but I think these are all things to have when we talk about the physical amenities and the layout of the property, as opposed to discussions that, that's the right time for this discussion, is when we're talking about design and physical layout and amenities, and not today. So let's have that discussion at that point, in that meeting when we do that, and I think it's in two meetings we'll be talking about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Was there another, somebody else have a question?
Rachel, who's the landscape architect, Rachel, can you-
I was just, I was gonna make a similar point that Ms. Brett Brestrop had pointed out in a previous meeting, that the height, that's three stories was allowed by zoning, and we are meeting all those terms, but I understand it's a later discussion.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. The next topic we want to deal with is local and regional need, and I think we have a presentation from town staff on the local and regional need for this type of housing, and I expect that they will talk about the need for single occupancy, single use, single person use units. So Nate, are you going to present that?
Sure, yeah, I don't have a presentation per se, I'll just be giving a little talk in maybe 45 minutes, if that works.
No, Nate.
Yeah, so you know, with a comprehensive permit, the ZBAs asked to weigh, you know, the local and regional need of affordable housing to any possible impacts from a project, and so, you know, the regional need and local need is great for affordable housing in Amherst, especially for studio apartments. The, you know, Valley has information in their application and their PEL, there is no comparable housing in Amherst, and so, you know, it's hard to say exactly what's the need, but it's great. And I think the, you know, I'll just give a little background, Dave Zomack did it as well, but the town has worked for years to find this type of project, and so whether or not we're working specifically with Valley, you know, 10 years ago, the town was interested in finding housing for homeless individuals, housing for extremely low income, so 30% AMI or less, and, you know, there's been different housing studies, different working groups to look at this. Specifically, we've been looking at housing for, you know, studios or smaller apartments and transitional housing for, you know, five years in earnest, putting money in for studies, you know, Valley has received block grant funding and CPA funding to further this project. You know, we held, the Housing Trust has held a few forums on this type of housing, so having different providers and developers discuss why single-room occupancies are needed as both housing for professionals, for people transitioning out of homelessness. So, you know, it's not just one user, it's different users that can occupy studio apartments. And so, you know, we've really been working on this type of project for four or five years, and the fruition of that is this application. And, you know, the town supported it through different zoning changes, through monetary funds, and so, you know, I think, you know, from our perspective, it's something that is needed. Just to give a perspective, you know, the master plan in 2000, the master plan was done in 2009 and 10, and there's previous work done on it, and even back then it identified expanding infill and density in the downtown and village centers with smaller units. And so even then, the town's vacancy rate was less than 2%. So, you know, the average vacancy rate in the state may be 6% or higher, and that allows for turnover, but in Amherst, you know, the students drive the market. The Housing Production Plan in 2013, the 2015 Housing Market Study really said that students drive the market, and they put pressure on both, you know, homeowners and renters to find housing in town. And so, you know, even in the master plan, they said that, you know, the vacancy rate was less than 2%. They found that over half the renters were cost burdened, that means they're spending over 30% of their income for housing. And more recent studies have found similar information, so that, you know, the Housing Market Study and the Housing Production Plan found that those numbers have even increased, that, you know, over half the renters are spending 30% of their income, many are spending over 50% of their income on housing. The 2015 Housing Market Study looked at studios a little bit more in-depth, and they found that, you know, they looked at off-campus listings from UMass and different sources, and just to give you an idea, only 0.4% of listings for apartments in Amherst were studio apartments in a complex. So the rest are for, you know, one, two, or three bedrooms, but there are very few studio apartments. Amherst had more studio apartments, you know, rooming houses, SROs, you know, whatever you want to call them, but they've been converted or changed, so really right now, there's maybe only two actual studio apartment buildings in town that are strictly studio apartments. The Housing Market Study found also that the rents for studios in one-bedrooms are the highest in cost per bedroom, and so they're effectively two or three times more than what someone earning, you know, an affordable income can afford. So when we've done more work with Beacon, looking at prices and justifying local preference, we found that on the newer developments, One East Pleasant or Kendrick Place, or some of the newer developments that have small one-bedrooms or studio apartments, the market-rate units are almost three times as expensive as what someone could afford. So University Drive, for instance, their market-rate two-bedroom was over two times what the affordable unit is rented at. So that just gives you a sense for the need of the housing. You know, the cost of housing is so great in Amherst that it's very difficult to afford to live there. In terms of numbers, you know, just a few years ago, 2018, the waiting list for one-bedroom units for affordable units in town, so for instance at Watson Farms, there was 54 people on the waitlist. You know, there's over 100 at Olympia Oaks for the one-bedroom units, and there were 67 for the one-bedroom units at Butternut Farms. And, you know, these can overlap with different-sized units, but it just shows you that for, you know, the smaller units, there is ample waiting list. The Housing Authority in Amherst, you know, say that it's a four-year waiting list to get, to be eligible to get on, you know, their Section 8, to get a Section 8 unit, to get a voucher, and sometimes it's six or seven years, depending on how you keep track of when you apply. So the need to find housing is great, and the cost is high. The Housing Production Plan found that there was, you know, an unmet need of almost 2,000 units for extremely low income that's earning 30% AMI or less in Amherst. They found that there was over 500 units for low income, or very low income, which is 30 to 50%, and, you know, another 600 for low income, which is 50 to 80%. So, you know, it's thousands of units, and there's unmet, you know, that are unmet. So the demand is there, the need is there, the units aren't available. And both the Housing Production Plan and the Market Study found that the biggest problem with Amherst was the lack of production. And so what's dominated the Amherst housing market in recent years is the production of single-family homes. So there's been more apartment complexes that have been developed, but by and large, between 2000 and 2010, the greatest amount of residential permits that were issued was for single-family homes, building permits. So expensive single-family homes has been dominating the market. In recent years, we're seeing more, you know, multifamily mixed-use buildings being developed that I mentioned, like One East Pleasant or Kendrick Place, but they're so expensive that they price out, you know, most tenants, especially anyone looking for an affordable unit. You know, these developments do not have any affordable units. You know, Valley CDC mentioned a few things in their PEL, I was just going to reference it again, it's, you know, they're really, in terms of housing for homeless individuals, there is no housing in Amherst. We have a seasonal shelter, Craig's Doors, you know, they operate Craig's Place, a seasonal shelter, you know, and they can see anywhere from, you know, 100 to 160 unique individuals during a shelter season. There's a point-in-time count in January for the number of homeless individuals in a community, and that can range from 15 to 20, or slightly more, in Amherst. It's hard to say exactly, you know, how many homeless are, live in Amherst, you know, because of the nature of the population, but even so, we don't have any comparable housing in Amherst for homeless individuals or extremely low individuals, extremely low-income And the, I think the big one too is the cost, that cost of housing in Amherst. So, like I said, being cost burdened, so the Housing Trust has been working on, you know, ways to increase the type of housing, and renters in Amherst are disproportionately affected by the demand for housing. So students, you know, are able to pay more per unit because they pay, you know, basically per bedroom or by student. So, you know, like I said, that, you know, a studio apartment at some of these places may be running from $1,500 to $1,800 a month, which, I mean, that's for a studio apartment, and that's not even a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, and that is much more than an affordable unit would be capped at. So, you know, whether or not, how much demand there is, there just isn't housing at all to meet any demand. But that's, you know, I think there is, you know, tremendous demand. The Amherst Housing Authority also reported that on their waiting list, they have thousands, a few thousand people to get into units. So it's not just, you know, 20 or 30, it's thousands of people wanting to live in Amherst. And, you know, and that, that, you know, so when a tenant wants to apply to a unit, depending on their household size, they can specify a one- or two-bedroom or a studio, so there can be some overlap, so it's really hard to drill down and say how many, you know, unrepeated people want just a studio apartment. It would take a little more digging, but in any event, you know, it's, you know, a few thousand people are waiting to get into housing in Amherst. And I think, I think that's it for now, in terms of the regional and local need. If there's any questions?
Board members have any questions? Nate, it seems to me that you said there's a deficit of 2,000 units, 2,000 units for single individuals at either low, extremely low, low income, very low income, or extremely low income, is that right?
That was just for all households, it's not just for individuals. The difficulty is, you know, how do you define just individuals? So, you know, with, in the Housing Production Plan, they found, you know, at least 15 to 20 beds are needed for homeless individuals, and they found a few, you know, 200 units for extremely low income, which is typically a single individual. So they found, you know, a few hundred units were needed for that population.
For single individuals?
Yes. You know, but that's at the very low-income level, and so, you know, Valley's doing a mixed-income project, so it's both, you know, extremely low income up to 80%. So the Housing Market Study really looked at the different types of people who'd want to live in Amherst, both affordable and market rate, and they found that, you know, many young professionals, visiting professors, you know, professional individuals, retirees want to live in Amherst, and they may want studio apartments, and so they, you know, what they were saying is that because students outprice individuals because they, the way they live together, it's, you know, and they said that there is, you know, they said, well, in New England, they said there's over a million people based on their characteristics, their marketing strategies, but they found that, again, that it was hundreds of individuals who would want to live in Amherst in smaller apartments that can't. And, you know, that's both affordable and market rate. So the Housing, 2015 Housing Market Study, you know, just said that there is a great demand for, you know, smaller units. And some of that was also based on the price, right? If they're being priced high, that shows that there's high demand for them. So, you know, developers who are developing new units know that those, you know, that they can get that price, if they didn't, they wouldn't be priced that high, and so clearly there's a demand for studios and small one-bedrooms. That's kind of the trend right now we're seeing in mixed-use developments and new developments, is the-
But they're not at affordable prices, there's not being, there's nothing being developed without subsidy or without support at affordable prices.
Right. Right, that's the issue.
Ms. O'Meara?
Thank you. Just, I need a few points of clarification. So I understood originally that each unit was $265,000 times 28 units, which adds to the total of $7.42 million, is that correct?
Yes.
And with inflation, with recent prices of materials that have escalated with COVID-19, et cetera, et cetera, what is the new price tag?
We tried to price it, the original pricing was done on a square-foot basis, and we tried to build in a little bit of contingency in it, because until you have an actual firm complete design, you can't really go out into the marketplace and test it. So we did build a little bit of cushion, and we also have a contingency built into the construction cost.
My point again is, how is this affordable housing at $265,000 a unit for the square footage we're proposing? And I appreciate the need for it, but how is this affordable?
So I think, I'll just mention that the cost of the development can relate to the affordability if a developer passes on costs through, you know, through rent, but here, Valley is subsidizing the rent essentially so that they're capped at a certain amount, so that's what makes it affordable. Whether or not it's affordable to develop, we're looking at what is affordable for someone to pay on a monthly basis. And so, you know, if Valley's going for an energy-efficient building, you know, that could meet passive house standards, they may be willing to spend more upfront because in the long run, it reduces energy costs for tenants and users. And so the cost of the development isn't necessarily what we're looking at when it looks, and when we're talking about affordable, it's about what does a tenant pay to live there? And so the units themselves are going to have, you know, a reduced rate, and that's what makes it affordable. So it's affordable to someone earning different income levels, so they're spending less than 30% of their monthly income on housing. That's, that's how, you know, that's how the town and the state look at affordability, not necessarily, you know, they'll, you know, they'll look at the cost of the development on a per-square-foot basis to see if it's competitive, but they're not going to say, well, that's not an affordable housing development.
Other questions on local and regional need? Ms. Parks?
So is it, so will Valley be trying to give local preference? Is that something that's okay to do?
So our comprehensive permit application speaks a little bit to the issue of local preference. We, as the developer, can't impose local preference, according to the state, which is the big kind of funder of all this stuff, that request would need to come from the municipality, and we could assist with that. What we've said in our comprehensive permit application is that we don't necessarily, our first choice would not necessarily be local preference, but there are pros and cons either way with local preference. We think housing is a regional need and a regional resource, and what we see as applications in our other properties is primarily from Western Mass. It's the kind of corridor, the Franklin, Hampshire, Hampton County, is where we tend to get applicants from. So it depends how you define local. That's our region we pull from, we don't get people from out-of-state typically trying to apply and-
This is a really important question, Ms. Parks, and this is something that is number four on the agenda today.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, I know, and I promise you, we will get to local preference here, but one of the things, I want to close this out, and then I want to get to public comments because we didn't have public comment last time, and then we'll get to local preference if there's time tonight or first thing at our next meeting. But I want to just, I want to finish out the- But I wanted to, I wanna finish out the, the establishment of need and make sure the members have all the information they need to decide, um, if this is the appropriate response to that need, the existing need.
Can I add a little data, so at the Sergeant House property that just opened, um, we had, uh, about twenty-five open units, because we had some returning tenants, we had two hundred and fifty applicants for those units in the lottery. So it's about ten applicants for every unit that was available. And that's a pretty steady number at, at Lumber Yard, which is family housing, we had fifty-five units, we had four hundred and fifty applications. So that's a nine-to-one, so really you're looking at about eight, nine, ten times the number of people wanting a unit than the number of units that you have. On our waiting lists for other single-room occupancy properties, we tend to run between about eighty to a hundred people waiting for units, and they don't turn over that often, so it's, it's, again, there's just a lot more demand than there are units.
I sense that we've exhausted our questions on local and regional need, uh, not on local preference, and that we'll get to, uh, so I think we can, so I'd like to get to public comments, at the last meeting, we did not have time for public comments. And I do wanna give time for the, the public to comment on this application. Uh, so if you, if you, uh, would raise your hand, uh, use the feature on, on Zoom that allows you to raise your hand. Um, staff will help to identify, um, people who wish to speak. When you do speak, give your name and address. Talk, you have about three minutes, um, make it, uh, and to provide your point, we wanna make sure that everybody that's, that wants to speak can speak. And, um, and we wanna hear your opinions and your views, so, um, I would ask that, um, if you are interested, raise your hand, Maureen will identify that person, and we will, um,
It looks like Pat, uh, Pat DeAngelis, um, has a comment.
Go ahead. Name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I want to, um, I live at, uh, twenty-one Ward Street here in Amherst. I also need to say that I am a member of the Town Council, uh, representing District Two. I am not here on behalf of the council, I'm here as a private citizen. Um, so, let me see, so I moved to Amherst with my wife Carol and our son Jesse twenty-seven years ago for two very important reasons. One was the quality of the Amherst Public Schools, and the other was our desire to live in a diverse and collaborative community. The Pomeroy Lane Co-op, Cooperative, which was a newly created community developed by the organization called ABOs, whose members were parents of adult children with cognitive and physical challenges. In January nineteen ninety-three, our family, along with twenty-four other families, some like us who had come to Amherst from neighboring towns and cities, moved into the Pomeroy Lane Co-op. We were intentionally diverse. We were households labeled low-income, Section Eight, and market rate. We were Asian, Latinx, Black, and White. We were gay and straight. We were individuals with diverse cognitive, physical, and emotional needs. And we were all at varying levels of understanding about issues of racism, social, economic, and environmental justice. Living in the community challenged the assumptions we held about each other. Living together, we started to see the strength and creativity inherent in the diversity of our community. We learned to see and acknowledge difference and to find ways to collaboratively solve the problems that arose. This experience, this community showed me what Amherst could be. This experience is one of the many reasons I support Valley CDC one thirty-two North Hampton Road Project, and wholeheartedly welcome the people who will live there. Today, I have friends who are personal care attendants, who work at Stop and Shop, who are recovering from cancer, who are cognitively disabled, who are writers and former teachers, all of whom need a home, a real home, one which this project can provide. So I am left asking you, the members of the Z B A, will you and the rest of our community make it feasible for low-income and extremely low-income residents to live productively in our community? Will we make it possible for people healing from racism, classism, homelessness, illness, or addiction, to move into our community and flourish? Will we welcome their energy, creativity, and experiences? And allow them to challenge our assumptions and enrich our lives and our community with their presence? Please support this project, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Maureen, who's next?
Um, we have, let's see here. Ca- uh, Kathy
Kathy Shone?
Shone, there you go, Kathy, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can, yep.
Okay, um, I'm Kathy Shane, I'm at five nineteen Montevue Road, and as Pat DeAngelis just said, I'm on the council, but I'm representing myself, not the council. Um, I too support this project, and I have basically two questions as you read get to the physical design of the building and the space. Um, and I, I believe I asked at least one of them when this went through the council, these are being designed as very small units for one-person efficiencies, which has, the point has been made several times. If a person gets married, or if a person has a child, that would mean they have to move out. And one of my questions was, could a few of these units, in the way the house, the building is designed, share a wall that doesn't have, uh, utilities and wires in it? So if in the future, there was a decision that you really need a few one-bedroom units, that you could convert two efficiencies and turn it into one, it's similar to what you see sometimes in hotels, where there's an adjoining room. And it wouldn't be, go ahead and do that, so it doesn't have to have a door in it, but would it be possible? Because it may be that you don't wanna ask people to move, um, when they end up being more than one person, and they may wanna stay, having formed a community. So that's a question on what is possible in the structure. And the second is, when you, when, um, we were just shown the pictures of what the units will look like in closet space. Um, the ones seem to have a very small closet for clothing as part of the kitchen. And so my question on that is, uh, is, is there, are there built-in dressers, is there room for clothing? If it's not in the unit, is there storage space so people can put their winter sweater someplace and take out their summer raincoats or something, because it, it looked very small, even if people are not expected to have much in belongings, they might have uh, seasonal changes of clothing, including coats, those are my, uh, they're, they're questions rather than comments. I was, I have been and continue to be a strong supporter of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um,
Susan?
Yep.
Hello, can you see me?
We can hear you.
Uh, do I have to do the cameras? Well, no. Carolyn, how do I do the camera?
No, you don't, you don't have to, just go ahead and, and, um, begin, your name and address, please.
Oh, okay, um, yes, I, I spoke on July second, I'm Susan DeGrav, I live at Rolling Green Apartments in Amherst, and, um, I think that the presentation was outstanding, that the housing looks great, the form of the building is perfectly in keeping with the neighborhood. It meets the zoning, as was mentioned, and I just wanted to mention on July second, there was a gentleman who talked about the fact that the homeless have to camp out, um, when the, the shelters close for the seasonal summer. And I had an experience with my family where we were camping, and long story short, I was having my car repaired, and I stayed over, and I was looking at the stars out of my tent, and then all of a sudden, at four in the morning, there was this beautiful spring shower, but I hadn't put the fly up on the tent, because of course, I hadn't gone camping in thirty years. And I got soaked, and I had also foolishly been sitting out at my campfire after my kids left, and I hadn't secured my belongings, so I was lucky I had a change of clothes. I went to the ranger station, but I was really soaked to the skin, and I, before I did that, I was lying there in the tent, just thinking about what it must be like, if you, literally, at that point, I didn't have my car, it was in the shop. I was gonna have to wait for my son to get me at noon. It was at Tully Lake Campground, if you know it. And I just lay there thinking about what must it be like to be there in the rain, in a tent, I know I've been at Puffer Pond, and I've seen tents there with people trying to be discreet and tent out. And to be soaking wet and have nowhere to go, it's just, it's just not right. So when Mr. Langsdale was talking about, you know, the walking and so forth, it just seems to me that tenting out and being out and homeless and not having a place to go and having soaking-wet clothing and things like that, no human being should live like that. And I think in terms of the walking, the other story I would tell briefly is that my daughter and I were exploring some of the gates to the Quaman, and we went down a gate, and you have to go all the way down, you may know it, the one at the end of Amherst Road and Route two oh two, Gate twenty-two, well, it's a mile and a half down. And then you come up and you realize, wow, I'm really out of shape. And there was a woman who did it easily, and she was older than me, and it made me realize that, you know, this is something that's very important, and I, I think it's Barbara who talked about, you know, the need for walking, and a lot of these people are not going to be handicapped, and, and the walking is good, and I believe it is safe. The final thing I would say is there are comments submitted by some of the abutters on August twenty-first. And I really found the citation of all these various acts to be quite disingenuous, because she cited the McKinney Act, the Olmstead Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, as if the concern was that, you know, disabled people wouldn't be able to apply. I don't think they would want a person who is opposing this development to be their lawyer. They want someone to say that they are grown-ups and that they need housing, and that they don't wanna be out in a tent in the elements, and this is enough, when I hear that since April twenty nineteen, the abutters were invited, they've had a chance to weigh in. I'm, I've listened tonight for, for all this time, and I really applaud, you know, the, the Z B A for doing this, but when I hear that there's more discussion coming, I would urge you to approve this. I think it's absolutely essential, and I don't think people should have to be out there and homeless when this is a very reasonable project. And the final thing I would say, as far as this fifty-three G review, I tried to look it up, that Ms. Loizan is asking for. And it pertains, I think, to saying that the developer has a conflict of interest or is not qualified, that's clearly not the case here. There's complete transparency, there's complete competence and professionalism. And I understand people who live in the neighborhood don't want this new development, but like my daughter said, who's a teenager, mom, they can't choose their neighbors, those people didn't do anything wrong, did they? She's right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Barbara Wilber?
Hi, yeah, and, um, I'm not speaking for or against, um, Barbara Grabben-Wilber, one twenty-six North Hampton Road, and the median abutter. Um, I just had a couple of questions or clarifying statements. One was, um, Laura, you mentioned that you have smoke-free units. The question was whether is labeled smoke-free, do you still have smokers? Or is it no longer an issue because you say it's smoke-free?
So I mentioned that we have smoke-free properties, um, we don't, in a, in a given property, we don't have like an apartment that's smoke-free versus another one.
Sorry, that was my misspeak, I meant you've had smoke-free
Yeah.
Buildings, but do they still smoke?
So, um,
If they do, where do they go?
Laura, let's do this, let's, let's let the, the public hear the question, and you will respond later, so just, just state your question, Ms. Wilber, please.
Okay, so the question was that if, in the smoke-free buildings, do the people still smoke, and if they do, where do they go, there was some discussion about out in the street or whatever. Um, you talked about the new market, the, uh, black sheep. I think that's gonna be pretty expensive, I don't think that there're gonna be, um, very many affordable items there, but that's just a guess. The letters that you shared worked, were very nice, seemed to be discussing daytime. Um, I mean, one's a professional building and another was a cafe, so it almost seems like during the day, there may be less interaction or less need, not, less instances of, um, issues. Then the last thing was, it's a little disconcerting that if this need is in Amherst, that either the Housing Committee or the Zoning Board, or whomever, isn't perhaps more strict in their zoning, requiring more affordable housing in these things, and sort of regulating what is affordable and what is not. So that's it, thanks much.
Thank you very much.
Um, let's see here, uh, Jim Oldham?
Hello, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good, this is Jim Oldham from seventeen Columbia Drive. And I'm speaking to strongly support this proposal and encourage, uh, the Z B A to, um, give it, uh, full approval, um. I want to echo a few things that were said and add particular perspective of my own, uh, Nate spoke, I think, very well to the, the clear need in our community for this type of housing, I uh, served for a period of time on the Comprehensive Planning Committee that developed our master plan that Nate made reference to. Uh, so again, going back more than a decade, we've been aware of, and people in town have been talking about it. I think the previous speaker is absolutely correct, that there's much more that we need to do in this town in many ways, and how we do zoning and, and other things, uh, but, uh, anything other than approving this project would, would be a move in the wrong direction, this is a project that addresses a long-awaited need. Uh, I am very impressed by the high quality of the original proposal and the high quality of the responses that you've been getting to your many questions and, uh, responses to community concerns, the professional care and thought that's gone into this. I've lived on Main Street in Amherst, uh, as a renter, surrounded by other rental units. I've lived on East Hadley Road, uh, fairly close to large apartment units, now I live on Columbia Drive, still near those large apartment units in a neighborhood surrounded by single-family homes. I would say that if, if our private, um, rental properties were given half the care that, that this you, this development is being given, if our, uh, commercial apartment buildings were given half the care, if our private homes were were, uh, managed as well as, as this is clearly going to be managed, we would be better off as a town. I, I, it's, it's remarkable to me uh, just listening today and having read the materials, just how thoughtful and careful Valley has been with all of this. Um, I wanna speak to the site briefly, when I first heard about the site and when I saw it, I thought, wow, how did they, I didn't, they must have been trying to get this site for such a long time. It's not a perfect site, people have mentioned the slope or something, but it's about the best site you could possibly hope for, for the, the need that's being met. It is walking distance, I've lived in town, I've walked to the supermarkets in, in my early years in town, I've lived without a car, it's a great site for somebody who doesn't have a car. It's with, all the, all the things that have been said about the different types of transportation that are available. Yes, it's imperfect in some ways, that there's a hill, but uh, what are you gonna do, if you wanna get to Amherst, you're gonna go up a hill. Um, I ride my bike up the hill to get there from, from my home, or, or walk sometimes, so um, so that's sort of my final point that I wanna make is I appreciate the due diligence of the board, I know that's what your job is, I know that's what you're supposed to do. And, and so I really appreciate your care and thought as you think about smoking on the property and snow removal and access to transportation and the size and shape of the building, and so on and so forth. But I hope that that work will lead But I hope that that work will lead ultimately to the approval of a project that will serve the full number of people that Valley has set out to serve, that will not make the project impossible for them to carry forward, that will not make it too expensive as it is. It's been noted that it is quite expensive and a lot of resources are going into it. I hope that this due diligence will, will serve to ultimately deliver, help Valley deliver the excellent vision they have for serving the need that Amherst has been aware of for such a long time. And, and I hope-
All right, Mr. Oldham, can you wrap it up, please?
Yep. I, I, I just hope that, again, that this, this care doesn't turn into wearing the developers down, wearing the organization that is bringing us such a good opportunity down or, or the narrowing of, of the opportunity because as, as Pat DeAngelis said earlier, this is, this is what our community should, this, these are people our community should be serving. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Amy Gilbert Lornz.
Thank you. My name is Amy Gilbert Lornz and I live at fourteen Orchard Street and I'm in a butter to the proposed project. I just want to raise the issue of the tenant selection process and ask for Valley CDC to provide more details about how tenants are selected. Beyond the query check and a few disqualifiers determined by law or the rule requiring six months of sobriety, what is the criteria for assessing readiness for independent living? And is this consistent across service providers? Previously, Valley CDC said that they work with service providers with whom they have pre-arranged memorandums of understanding. Tonight, for the first time, they said they advertise broadly to a large listserv of service providers. I think they mentioned thirty providers or some, something like that. Presumably, they don't have MOUs with most of the agencies on the listserv. I think, Mr. Chairman, you pointed out that they provided two in the proposal. Do they give preference to the few select agencies with, with whom they have MOUs? Or do they have a process that gives every applicant, applicant equal chance of achieving tenancy? Can they describe an instance when a tenant came to them independently or connected with a service provider, as they mentioned they would do, and then subsequently given a room? Or are these individuals always placed on the waiting list in deference to people who are clients of their preferred providers? As I wrote in my letter of August eighteenth, I have many questions and concerns about the tenant selection process and the supportive services plan. I strongly believe we need more details. Valley CDC says their plan is so comprehensive, I believe they said sixty pages plus, that they will be thoroughly vetted by DHCD. It would be great to be able to see these details ahead of time and to get a guarantee around the areas of the hours of the Resident Services Coordinator, Transportation Services, not just ad hoc as in, you know, if, if four residents pull together and want to go to the grocery store. Those things do happen and that's great, but what really is this Transportation Services Plan? And the actual program linkages to longer-term services? One of the things that was presented last week was the idea that the Resident Services Coordinator just provides linkages to services. And now they're proposing the idea of hiring someone who's actually a so, social service professional. Does that change the scope of the work of this, this person? Are they going to be providing services on-site? You know, I, I don't have an opinion either way on that. I just want to understand what is actually going to be provided in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Susan Degrave?
So, I just want to say, I, you know, I, yesterday, last night, I read Ms. Lornz's letter from August eighteenth and she's basically just reiterated it. And I want to remain respectful. She's a citizen and I'm a citizen. But these are red herrings. Essentially, you know, it's sort of like when Irving Younger, when he talks about evidence and someone gets on the witness stand and the, and the only question he asks is, what's your relationship to the defendant? Well, you're his mother, aren't you? No more questions. She's in a butter. She has a particular position and I personally find it very unfortunate that she's trying to act as if she's concerned about discrimination toward the handicapped, the disabled, who is going to get in. You know, the presenter, I, I think I might have gotten her name wrong, the head of the Valley, Barbara or, or, yes. Anyway, she clearly went through this in detail, anticipated things out of this letter. And this has just been, been, you know, debunked. This is not, these are not rational objections. The transportation has been described. The selection process has been described. And, you know, I just, I just have to call her out on this. I, you know, I respect her as a person, as a citizen, and I understand she has her property rights, but that's what her objections are about. They are not about defending people who can't get into the selection process. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, let's also, let's go to people who have, I realize you'd already spoken once. Let's give everybody a chance first before we have anybody speak a second time from now on. But that was, that was my fault to not recognize your name right away. I'm sorry for that. Maureen, who's next?
Laura Lornz? Laura?
Hi, it's Laura Fitch, one twenty Pulpit Hill Road. I just really want to voice my support of the project. Susan Degrave really spoke my mind. I'm a former foster mother, well, I guess I am a foster mother. From, my foster child was homeless when she was nineteen and pregnant. And she had a really wonderful, she was, she had been my foster child when she was very young. And she had a really good experience in homeless shelter where they provided her ability to get a GED. And she's now independent and has her own business that is, was thriving up until the point of COVID and is sort of surviving the COVID experience. And her daughter is like my granddaughter and, you know, I think homeless, I think her program was called Housing First. But anyway, that's the idea is that you house people first and then you can work on their other issues like getting a GED. So that's my, that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input.
Jerry Weiss?
Hi, I'm Jerry Weiss, two seven seven Middle Street in Amherst, of course. And I am the president of the Board of Directors of Craigstores and a former Select Board member. I've heard many good questions and concerns that are worthy of exploration tonight and I appreciate, appreciate the thorough job that the zoning board has done to date. At the same time, I've heard nothing in these concerns that would constitute such an egregious drawback requiring that this project be scuttled. Stopping this well-thought-out, and, and well-thought-out is, doesn't even touch how, how really well-thought-out it is. Stopping this project on the basis of these small, in my mind, imperfections suggests that homeless people and low-income people would be better served to not have this project come to fruition, that these units not be made available to them. Which is, as you think about it, an absurd idea that, that the questions and concerns are on their behalf, on the potential renters' behalf. I would advise people to go out and interview low-income people and homeless people to see how they feel about this project and whether they too would be appalled to have it come to fruition because of slope or distance to stop and shop or whatever the concerns are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carol Lewis?
This is Carol Lewis. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but you've got an echo.
I think the echo is now gone. Is that correct?
You just fixed it, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-one Ward Street in Amherst, obviously. I, I think I've been impressed by the level of details that everyone has gone into about this project, but what I feel is really important is I would like to remind you all of the, really the big picture here. This is a project that will address well-documented needs for affordable studio apartments in Amherst. A need Amherst has asked to have developers address. And it will be the first and so far the only such housing in Amherst. And as Jerry just said, I can't imagine anyone who will say, oh, I don't want that housing because the closet, closet is too small or any of the other kinds of details. Amherst has also, as Amherst also has requested, these units will be in a mixed-income setting. It will house some people who are currently homeless or immediately in danger of becoming homeless. It will be the kind of mixed-income setting also that is part of what Amherst has asked to have done. It will be located in a reasonable proximity. Services are, and, and, and there will be services in this, which in my mind is above and beyond what is required to provide housing, studio housing for people, studio apartment housing for people, but there will be services. Some people will take advantage of them and some people won't and that's just fine. And I guess the last thing I want to say is that there couldn't be a better developer to be working with, with a proven track record of successful similar projects all over the place. Has been a strong and much-needed partner to Amherst, has developed, what has, has worked to develop what has been asked for, has put themselves out there in front of this in order to try to make it happen as Amherst has requested. And I just, Amherst must be able to follow through on the things that it has said in the master plan and it's things that have been in process for years. This is an opportunity to do something. So I just want to urge you not to lose sight of that overarching need for this housing at this time now in Amherst. Do the right thing. Approve this project without any kinds of modifications that would possibly increase its cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kegelman?
Mr. Kegelman, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can, yes.
I'm sorry. So I submitted some written-
Name it. Mr. Kegelman, just identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Tom Kegelman and I live at six four nine East Pleasant Street in Amherst. And I had submitted some written comments and I just wanted to briefly summarize some of them. I hope you have a chance to read them. I think there's a lot of thoughtful comments that have been submitted. And I am impressed with all the work that has been done by this committee and by the applicants. I have been living in this community in Pioneer Valley for over forty years and I've witnessed the developments that Valley has done in North Hampton, East Hampton and now in Amherst and in all of them. I've been very impressed. And so I would like to say that the need that they're addressing is one that's very apparent to me that I see almost every day. Just yesterday, a couple of friends were about to be evicted and at the last moment they happened to call a landlord as another applicant withdrew. And for that bit of luck, but for that bit of luck, they would have been homeless. They're college-educated, professional musicians and individually, they would have been eligible for the apartments being proposed. And next door to us, there's a single-family home that's been converted to a rental. They just dug up a bunch of the front yard to put in new parking. And it's happening all over town and especially in our neighborhood. And as these developers skirt the few laws that constrain them, there lacks management, does little to control inexperienced renters and the overwhelming demand is oppressing the ability of young homeowners to come into the community. As a member of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, I am bound to promote the town's affordable housing priorities as determined through the most recent town housing plan. As a fellow town official, I would encourage you to join with us in fulfilling our promise to provide housing for low-income households. The plan was received by the local officials, town government on every level. It received significant support from both them and the residents at large. And as far as I'm concerned, it is a promise to the town that we will build the very badly needed affordable housing. And I hope that the ZBA will join with the AMAHT as fellow town officials to make sure that happens. Thirdly, as a professional housing developer, I have over forty years of experience working with the homeless, managing their housing and developing properties designed, built and managed to support them. As a resident, I have seen all of the work that Valley's done and I've been impressed. And I, in fact, have found a number of things in this project that I might want to borrow from my own projects. I wanted to specifically address the amount of supportive staff time that they have committed to serve these residents. I find it an extraordinary amount. I recall partnering with one of the nation's largest affordable housing developers a few years ago and their service budget for over two hundred units was less than thirty thousand dollars. At the time, that would have paid for three-quarters FDE, which comes out to about four thousandths of an FDE per household. That's not atypical. That's probably pretty routine for developers in this field. In our own properties, we have about double that, maybe a little more. And we have received a lot of compliments for the work that we do with our residents, many of whom are not homeless, but some are and many are low-income. And I would say that the, Valley CDC's commitment of a three-quarter FDE for a twenty-eight unit project is several times more per unit than what we would typically provide and ten times more than your typical developer. I should note that the homeless are all around us. Mobile vouchers provided by the agencies prioritize people who've been homeless. And they're, they're everywhere. And I would want to just point out that those who look at this project as housing people who need constant care, I just want to confirm, working with the homeless for most of my life, that they're just like your neighbors. They can be a bit untidy at times, a bit quarrelsome at times, but they are mostly homeless due to the tight rental market, job loss, health emergency or domestic violence and not because they need extensive services. What is being-
Thank you, Mr. Kegelman.
Not a nursing home or group home. And so I would just encourage you to see these people as, as your neighbors. And they will be extremely grateful to have the opportunity to have a decent, safe and affordable place to live. And I very much hope that you'll give them this well-deserved chance.
Thank you. We have a four, telephone that ends at five one three eight. Oh, you're back, Maureen, I'm sorry. Five one three eight.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Yes, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Demetria Shabaz. I live at twenty-nine Chapel Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak and holding this hearing on the project. First off, housing is a human right. And I'm one of the founders of the Racial Equity Task Force Group of Amherst. However, I'm speaking as a resident. I wholeheartedly support this proposal. New research from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development finds that since two thousand and seven, Massachusetts has been experiencing the highest increase by percentage in family homelessness out of all the states in the country. As of twenty twenty, there are currently three thousand four hundred families experiencing homelessness just in Massachusetts. And the toll of homelessness in the state falls unequally. While about thirty percent of state residents are people of color, they make up nearly fifty percent of the total homeless population according to the latest federal numbers. It's already been expressed by Nate, the, the serious problem in terms of affordability that we encounter here in Amherst. here in Amherst just for regular affordable housing, much less folks who are unhoused. It's important for our community to grow and diversify and deepen our understanding of one another. The Valley CDC project meets all the zoning requirements and is a very well-designed project that would complement any community. That it will potentially add to the diversity regarding class, race, and ability is a plus. It should be approved without question because it is a good project that will house the unhoused in a respectful manner, add to our community, and provide persons with unique needs a place of their own with dignity. Thank you. I certainly hope you all will approve this project.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else, Maureen? Yes, we have a couple more.
Hold on one second, let's see here. Whoa, I just, oh, sorry. Jay?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Please identify yourself.
It's Jay Levy. I'm with Elliott Homeless Services, and I live at 34 Logtown Road in Amherst. I kind of have a dual role and connection with the project. Just wanted to state that I've worked with Valley CDC for many years now on some of their other properties that they manage. HMR actually does the management, but that they developed out in Northampton in particular, Go West and King Street Properties. And what's been very impressive is they've been, as folks that are primarily trying to establish affordable housing for the community, they've really gone out of their way to connect with the social service network out in Northampton, and they've done the same in terms of connecting over time around this project in Amherst. And I think, you know, the proof is in the pudding, as we say, that we've done some really great work out in Northampton in terms of getting people housed and supporting them. We've done monthly meetings where we've gone over issues that may arise from time to time, and having a social service response to be helpful on those properties. I know you mentioned C-Spec and had some questions on that earlier, so I just thought I'd give a quick answer to that, that C-Spec is something that is billable through Mass Health, and you have to have a clinical license in order to provide that service. So some of the nonprofits in the area, like Elliott CHS Homeless Services, provide some C-Spec housing stabilization services for people who are chronically homeless. So just to say, I look forward to working with Valley CDC in the future. We've housed many, many people through their properties. I've been very successful with long, durable tenancies, and people have been very happy. They've seen incredible difference in the quality of their lives moving forward as they've gone from homeless to being housed. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time, and just know that myself, as well as many other community members that are connected with the social services, see this as an incredible need, and Amherst has done such a fine job in the sheltering of people who are homeless, but we really need to step up more on the housing front. So this is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comments?
Whoa, someone's, hold on a second. Let's see here, Mac user.
Yes, my name is Charles Fuller. I'm at 22 Chestnut Court. Coming through for you.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, okay.
Go ahead.
Yep. It's been 40 years since I've been on a zoning board or a ZBA, and, you know, as a organization of a town, we did not ask, for instance, when a bar wanted to expand, what the janitor's resume was. We did not micromanage services. I noticed this board has had two hearings based on things that have to do with staffing patterns. I wanted to remind people that that is a function of the State Board of Licenseur or the Commonwealth Board of Licenseur and program managers. I'd like to say that, you know, that's what the professional staff there is for. We don't ask our neighbors how much they drink when they move into town. These are people, these are neighbors. In many towns, neighbors actually volunteer at places like this, come across the street, shake hands, and meet, welcome people to the community. That's basically it. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else raising their hand.
I see no one else either.
Oh, Hilda, hold on a second. I see Hilda. One second, Hilda. Where is it? Wait. Oh, then she lowered her hand. Hilda, do you want to talk?
I guess not.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did want to talk. I put my hand up at the very minute of 8:15. First of all, I want to say that this project is a very beautiful, I call it a Victorian mansion in a park, and it puts all that architecture in downtown Amherst to shame for aesthetic qualities. The other thing I would like to say is that I really hope that you will push as hard as you can for local preference. Local preference really is only good for 70% of the slots on the first lottery, which is not very many housing, and Amherst already does have well above its quota, last I heard, 12.7% of affordable units here, where the towns all around us have none, or 1% or 2%, if that. And it really bothers me that without the local preference, well, even, or I say even with the local preference, and given 70% of the first lottery to local people, we're still behind the eight ball in providing the number of units that we need. And I often feel that it's not fair for us to subsidize other towns that don't want to do their share, and have read for years and years and years about Western, and finally Concord gave in and built affordable housing, but many towns don't want it, and we've gone out of our way to do it, and we're still behind the eight ball. So I'm pushing hard for the local preference as I have on all, I think I did six projects when I was on ZBA, and tried to get that for all of them. And the last thing I would like to ask about is, given the number of these units are for people who have been homeless or of low circumstances, will any of the units be furnished, or will there be opportunities for them to get help getting the furniture, pots and pans, a knife and a fork, and a dish that they need in order to live in these units, or will they be like camping out on the floor? I sure hope that there would be a way that they could get either help with a furnished apartment or perhaps get a furnished apartment. So that's my question and my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Greenbaum, thank you. Anybody else? Other comments from the public? Okay. So I think the best way to proceed is for us to just review the questions. We don't expect you to be able to respond to those tonight. You can respond to those at the next meeting. I think that makes the most sense. We've already, we're past our time already, but I want to just run through the questions as I have them, and then work with the staff. They'll provide a list of questions to you that you can then respond to for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
And if you can get that to us, you know, in advance so that we can put the response available to the public, so it's available as quickly as possible. The questions that I heard that we've needed a response from the applicant on, first regards the wall, can it be designed such a way to permit a combination of units? And I think that'll take some time talking with your architect. The second question is, can the closet, you know, around closets, it's generally, can it be bigger? What can we do with closets? That was the second question. I think the responsibility for to describe the peer review process comes from the town, and we can provide, put something on the website for that, and we have information about what the peer review is. There was a question about, where do people go when, if you have a smokes-free building and a smokes-free space, where do people go? I think you addressed that, but you might be able to address that again. On the tenant selection process, there was a question about what is the criteria for independence, or for independent living, for being ready for independent living? Is that common among service providers? So I think a reasonable question is to describe what, how you make the determination that a person is ready for independent living. Let's see, example of when, I can't, I'm sorry, I had a hard time reading my own writing here. Example of when a person comes, oh, so if a person comes from an independent without being associated with a service provider, do you have any experience of providing them housing? Did you match them up successfully, and do they get housing, or were they put on a waiting list? And the last question was, will units be furnished, and is there a way to provide help for basic outfitting of a unit, pots, pans, and essentials, sheets, blankets, I would suspect? Were there any other questions that board members or staff felt were asked that I did not list? Okay. So it's 9:12. We like to end these at 9 o'clock at night. We do have one more topic that I hoped we could get to, but Ms. Parks, I think we're not going to get to it tonight. But local preference did come up. We'll be well-prepared to deal with that at our next meeting as a first order of business for our consideration. What I'd like to do is, before we go to the public comment on any item not before the board tonight, I'd just like to review that we have, like to review future meetings. And Maureen, I know you sent it out. Let's just review when are the meetings, upcoming meetings for the ZBA. We have one on September 3rd, is that correct?
Correct, and that's for matters that are not related to the comprehensive apartment application.
So that's kind of a regular meeting, and we have a meeting on September 10th?
Correct, and that is for this application.
And what's the next meeting after that, September 24th?
There is one on the 24th. I believe everyone indicated on the doodle poll that they were available to continue this public hearing after the 10th, also on the 17th. Let's see here. No, yes, I believe we can continue this specific application on the 10th and then on the 17th.
Well, I thought you said the 24th.
That is when we have a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. Well, let's you and I look through that doodle poll so that we're clear about it, but I thought the 17th wasn't, didn't we have a meeting? But let's, we will get out to the members exactly when they will be. Let's go over that tomorrow morning, make sure that we got this right, okay?
Yep.
I might be mistaken.
No, yeah, according to my doodle poll, the 17th, everyone is available.
Okay. All right. So we have, coming up, we need to talk about local preference, density of housing, financial need, look at a pro forma, physical amenities and layouts, and waiver requests. Those are the topics that I see over the next several meetings, and I think if we have three more meetings, perhaps, or four, I'd love to do this in three, we should be able to get to, start getting to close of our consideration on this matter. So we are at, our next meeting on this will be on the 10th of September on 40B.
Hilda Greenbaum is raising her hand. I don't know if you want to call on, oh, now she unmuted by accident.
Yep. All right. So I think that concludes the business.
I'm lowering it.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're not muted. Oh.
What color is raised?
I actually don't have that button feature. Steve, do you have that?
I guess the reason you didn't call on me because I had the wrong color up.
That might have been it. But we're, we don't have any, Ms. Parks?
I just have a quick question. So I just wrote down what you said, and it looks like we don't have a meeting this, we don't have a meeting Thursday, but we have a meeting September 3rd, 10, 17, and 24?
Yes.
Okay, so every Thursday in September?
Well, I can resend out a new doodle poll if people feel that they need a, if they want to change their minds. I'm just indicating what was submitted via doodle poll.
I was just surprised. I'm just double-checking. I'm okay.
If any members want to change their mind, either send me an email.
Let's discuss this in the morning, and we'll decide about sending out a poll and maybe even choosing, yeah, I think that, let's do an organized poll as opposed to just ad hoc, so that we really get it right.
Now we have Christine Brestrepp is raising her hand. Chris?
I just wanted to remind you that you need to continue this public hearing to a date certain, so that particular date would not be up for discussion tomorrow.
The 10th will not be up for discussion tomorrow.
And Mr. Chairman, I just texted with John Witten, and he is available for the meeting on the 10th. I'm not, I have another 40B, but John Witten is available on the 10th.
Okay, so we know the 10th will be, we will have a meeting on this subject on the 10th. We're looking at, I guess the 17th is the one that's up near. All right. So what we need to do is move to suspend, to close this, to close this hearing for tonight.
To continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, to continue it until September 10th.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. We will meet on this on the 10th of September. The last order of business is, on tonight's agenda, is the opportunity for a member of the public to speak on any subject that is not, any matter that is not the subject of tonight's hearing. So anything other than the application of 40B that is before us tonight. Seeing no hands raised, I think we are done. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, this hearing? Ms. Parks moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear a second from Mr. Max, from Mr. Langsdale, I think. This is, any discussion? Roll call is required. Chair votes aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate, well, thanks to the public for their comments. Thanks to all of you for your hard work. Thanks, as always, to the town staff. We appreciate what you do and how you help us. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.